Okay, now being 6 o'clock, we call the June 25th Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The first agenda on our item is we're pleased to welcome our selectmen from Halifax and the fire chief, Kim Murray and Jason Moveros. For those of you who have been following along over the last year or so and know about the issues we've had dealing with the fire, Halifax has been just great in terms of reaching out to us and offering their support. We've had a number of meetings. At times, we've had maybe too many players doing all the coaching, but we're really pleased that you're here and we really appreciate the support you've given us. And Kim, I'd like to introduce you, if you'd like to make a few remarks. You can use this if you'd like to stand.
No, I think I'm fine with you guys.
Okay, great.
I actually thank you for having us at the meeting. I know I reached out to John, I reached out to Christine, I don't have your cell number, I'm sorry, Mr. Russo, I probably would have reached out to you. But I had launched your meeting last week and I had seen that this board was a bit disappointed with the town of Halifax. And I think there was some miscommunication of what was expected of Halifax at the time. And I think that there's been a lot of people involved, as John had alluded to, there's been some, a lot of informal requests of our committee, nothing formal from your particular board. And I think it sort of sent us in tailspins at times. And I'm here at the end of the day to talk about how we can improve communication between the communities, where we go from here, what the best steps are to go forward to researching this shared services. And that's the ultimate goal. But I thought it would be important, and it may take a few minutes, to sort of go through the timeline so that all the members of your board understand the different things that have been requested of us, so that you guys can have a discussion about where you want to go. And I think that, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I just want to be able to go through the timeline, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. So as you all know, we met on April 25th, and it was the first time that we had met since November 2016 to discuss the potential of Halifax providing a fire service to your community. At that time, our fire study committee had made a presentation, had offered an aggressive schedule, and we had a discussion about, Plimpton had felt that they were a little behind us, obviously, we had started a lot earlier, and that they wanted time to catch up. You were going to convene your fire study committees, both the technical committee and the oversight committee, and that we were going to meet on June 20th in order to just really have an update. This is the last formal request that we had, was just an update. You could see what we were doing, we could see what you were doing. As you know, we had done sort of the whole structure of the department, and the one thing that we were tweaking was the budget that we had created. And we were going to start to look at different intermunicipal agreements and different formulas, because as you all know, this is really the first in the Commonwealth of two towns looking at shared fire service. So that was going to take some time. We also talked about at that particular meeting that, once we got to that point, we would probably merge some of the members of each community into a fire study and we would work on those things, those, the formula intermunicipal agreement. So that's what the last of it was formally done. So now I'm going to go through the timeline of what's happened in the last six weeks, okay? Or longer. So a few weeks later, you also had a change in your acting fire chiefs. And you had hired Lance Benjamin, who was our former fire chief. I had had a really great working relationship with him when he was in Halifax. In fact, he and I had served on the very first fire study committee for Halifax, and so I was really happy for Plimpton that you had hired him. And I knew that that was a great choice and really looking at your department and figuring out the best future that you could possibly have. So I reached out to Lance just to say, hey, you know, if you have any questions about the presentation that we done, we had completed on April 25th, just let me know, I'm looking forward to working with you. He explained to me at that time that he was, his role was really just to look at the day-to-day operation. He didn't feel that he was going to be really involved in the shared services from the beginning, and that he was looking for direction from you to tell him really what, where he should go. We talked about, you know, at some point, if he's ever brought into it, it would be great to work with him. I wished him well, and, you know, we said goodbye until we could meet again. Then, on May 21st, I met with Liz. Liz had reached out to me and asked me to meet with her. I gave her an update that our fire study had completed the operational budget. We were still looking at draft forms of intermunicipal agreements and potential formulas. She explained to me at the time that Plimpton's technical committee had met, but the oversight committee had not, and she didn't have a lot to update me on and was hoping that we would have more when we met with you on the 20th. On May 31st, John Traynor met with Jason, our fire chief. Jason spent two hours explaining the operational plan. Jason also gave him an update that our fire study committee was working on the agreement and the formula, and John had requested a copy of what we had so far. It's important to note that this was a draft form and that it was not at all a final product, and Jason had offered at that point to attend any of the Plimpton fire study meetings. And John, at the time, didn't think that was a good idea, so we were very respectful of that. And I also want to mention that during that time, Jason had also reached out to your fire department to offer a, we were holding a Massachusetts Incident Reporting Systems class, and we wanted to be able to provide that for your department at free. He sent a couple of emails, he never received a response. So we were trying to be proactive at that time. Throughout the month of May, we would get informal requests for information. I don't know how I got word that you were looking for an intermunicipal agreement, like a final draft. That sort of surprised me, but somehow I got the request, and so we still had only the draft, and so we decided we would work on it again. Because again, we were waiting for that collaboration, but we got the request, so we started working on it. Again, since this would be the first shared fire service in the Commonwealth, that we ourselves were setting the standard. And it was very important to us that we had a formula that was fair for both communities. And this was not going to be a simple process, time and discussion for needed thoughtful consideration. And we set a meeting, again, for our fire study committee to work on it. On June 4th, I had a telephone conversation with Liz. It was mostly an update, and I mentioned that a family member was having major surgery on June 20th. Again, I just was letting her know that I intended on going to the meeting on June 20th, but because of this family obligation, there was a chance if things had gone badly that I would miss that meeting. And I wanted just to let her know that I may not be there, so you guys can walk in and go where you can. At that time, Liz was very kind and said, you know what, I don't think that we're ready for the 20th either, I think it's totally fine that we can bump that meeting to the week of the 27th. I told Charlie at the time to coordinate whatever the date was, I was very appreciative that you were willing to bump that meeting. I think that you've gone back and forth with Charlie, I think you're still waiting that the week of July 9th was both good for you and good for us.
Correct.
And so I don't know that Charlie, Charlie's back from vacation today, I don't know if he reached out to you. On June 7th, I asked Charlie to send an email to Liz outlining the timeline that we would have to meet in order to achieve shared services for fiscal 2019. Again, at our meeting on April 25th, we talked about that aggressive schedule. We knew that it would be a tough schedule for you to meet, but we wanted to be able to have those dates out there. I know that, Mr. Russo, during that meeting, you appreciated the tight schedule to keep people moving going forward.
Right.
So that memo was really just an intended to give you an idea of, if you're going to meet this deadline, these are the dates that we need to set our tax rate, these are the things that need to happen. So, okay, Liz, I just want to make sure I don't miss anything from that date. Charlie also included, he included that if it wasn't, you know, the date that was going to be made, then that's okay, like, we have the whole fiscal 2020 to work on it. We talked about using the grant to help fund that whole sharing of training. Back in April, Jason had come up with a great idea to recruit more staff by paying tuition for EMT and firefighter 1 and 2, and we have extended that offer to you. The grant money was approved based on both communities pursuing shared services. If this was, if there was a decision by any of the two towns that we were not going to pursue shared services, we would need to ask the state whether it could still be used for training. This was not a decision of the town of Halifax, but a stipulation of the grant. We were not backing away from shared training, as was stated at your meeting last week, but we needed to make sure that we were staying within the guidelines of the grant. I know that there was some concern that we were kind of backing away from that commitment, and we're not. As long as we're pursuing a shared service, then those grant funds are available. If any time either town says, you know what, I'm going to go my own way, then we do by law have to check with the state to make sure that we're not breaking any laws. Charlie also mentioned in the memo that we were working on that informal request of that intermunicipal agreement, and we did hope to get you something by the 20th. Charlie saw Liz at a luncheon later that same day and requested that we come up with a proposal for providing EMS service only. This was very surprising to me, since in November of 2016, at a meeting that we all met, that was one of the options that was eliminated right away because of the great area of who would manage the staff. If there was a fire going on in Plimpton and we had that station staff with paramedics, would they go to the fire? It just makes it for difficult management. I didn't know if it was just a casual conversation between two town administrators of a luncheon, if it was a formal request of your board, but I was so confused by the request, and we had been receiving these informal requests all along, that I just didn't want to put work into something that I know, because we sat across the table from you, that was not something that you supported. So I did nothing with that. That was the only informal request that I did nothing with. That same week, John Traynor had asked a member of the technical fire study committee to reach out to Jason about our own Halifax fire department budget. John had wanted more detail on that budget and provided John's Plimpton standalone budget as an example of the format that he wanted. When reviewing the Plimpton standalone budget, Jason and I realized that perhaps there were a few things missing in the budget that may cause you problems at a later date. I offered to sit with John and Jason to go over it. This was not a budget that Lance had created, but one that was created by John and a member of your fire department. And on June 12th, I met with John, Jason, and your town accountant Barbara. It was a very good meeting where we made suggestions to what Jason and I felt should be changed in order to support your standalone fire department. We also gave some information of future costs that may not be present at this time, but would be in the next couple of years, because we wanted to make sure that you were covering everything. As good neighbors, regardless if you chose to contract with us, we really wanted you to have all the right information, so that if your choice was to be a standalone department, that you would be the most successful that you could. And we were happy to provide that information, and we're happy to provide any information going forward if that's your decision. At that time, we discussed Charlie's email about the timeline for fiscal 2019. I asked John if he felt that Plimpton would meet the deadline, and he said he did not, and I really thanked him for his honesty, because we really needed to know that, because we were trying to achieve this timeline. We talked about still moving forward and that we had talked about at some point again merging the two fire study committees. I said that since he explained that Plimpton would not meet the deadline, it meant that we had more time to engage with a professional consultant using some of the grant money. This consultant could help complete the formula in the agreement, and although we had a draft, we felt strongly that this, again, would be setting the standard for our future. And I wanted to ensure that it was the best agreement for everyone, and that the formula was the most challenging for us to come up with, to make it as fair as possible for both communities. And by hiring a professional consultant, and it wouldn't be a fire consultant, it would be more of a professional town manager, administrator consultant, something I mentioned to John Aubrey Lynch or Rafa Longo, somebody who's been in the business for a long time, because again, this is an executive agreement. And I felt like, well, if we don't have a deadline to meet, this would be a great opportunity to really bring in some people to help us with it. I explained at that time that I would ask my board of selectmen at the next selectmen's meeting if we could approve spending some of the grant money for this consultant, which I did, and I did receive that support from my board. Charlie thought maybe it would be a good idea, since we had worked so much on the different formulas, that we try tweaking the formula before we engaged with a consultant, so they have something solid to look at. We agreed to meet the following morning to work on it, Jason, Charlie, and myself. Unfortunately, we had a structured fire that morning. That tied up our chief for all of the day. We did not get to it, Charlie was going on vacation the next day, for 10 days, and because of my conversation with John, I felt, okay, Plimpton now knows they're not making the date, we don't have to rush into this, it can wait until Charlie gets back. Then on Tuesday of last week, I reconsidered forward that, at your selectmen's meeting the night before, that you were all very upset at Halifax, and that we had not given you any numbers or proposals. And I was really very disappointed in that. At the meeting in April, it ended by saying that on June 20th, both boards of selectmen would need to get updates, not that a proposal would be due. I even went and watched that video again to make sure that I was not off on that. Again, we had gotten these informal requests for these copies of things, but there was nothing really said. And, you know, I had hoped that somebody would have stuck up for me and said, hey, I know that Kim had a family obligation that day, and that's why she couldn't meet the date. And that was the only date that I could not make. So now, as part of this meeting, I heard that you needed the actual formula by Wednesday, by when you were getting your fire study together. Jason, unfortunately, had his father-in-law pass away unexpectedly. He was now away, Charlie was away, I couldn't meet with my board.
Yeah, thank you.
And I didn't want to disappoint you, so I called Christine, and Christine was great. I said, listen, this is what I'm hearing, this, all this communication that I think is just a mess between the communities, that I'm getting requests, we're kind of jumping through hoops, but we're still not meeting what your expectation is. She was great and said, no, 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 Kim, we don't need it by tonight, we are talking about it on Monday, so if you get something to us by Monday. Again, it wasn't part of the original plan, but we wanted to be able to help. So I reached out to Jason, who was driving home from Florida, and I said, this is the situation. He was kind enough to read us a downwind on Wednesday so that we could actually finish working on this formula. We did that, we spent five hours working on it. He sent you the document, again, it's a working document, this has not been blessed by my board of selectmen, our finance committee, our fire study, this is just something so that you can use for discussion. Then I actually got sent a link to your fire, to your meeting for Monday, and that's what made me reach out to Christine and John. Because I was watching and I thought, gosh, you know, we've really been trying, and I don't know what more we can do, you know? We've been timely, we've been professional, we've asked, we've done everything that has been asked of us. And to see you all disappointed in us was really very sad to me, because I don't know what more I can do. We, in the town of Halifax, is still committed to moving forward with shared services, but I wanted to come today to ask you, how can we fix this? How can we fix the communication between the communities so that we're not getting this mixed signal, or, you know, do this, no, do this? So that's why I'm here.
So, let me, a couple of clarifications. The EMS service only, when we met with you and Jason and Barbara Gomez, our accountant, you made it clear that wasn't an option. We had given, we put down four options that we saw. That was, one was shared service, one was staffing only, one was the EMS service only, and one was standalone. And we used that over the two hours that we talked. The numbers we got from Jason, that was the numbers that came forth for the budget, was really helpful. And the discussion around items that maybe we hadn't thought about enough in terms of the cost effect was very helpful, too. We went back and made some adjustments internally just to see, you know, how close we were. As far as the, at the same time we had that meeting, and you asked us about the date, or you asked me, I, my headset was that to get it through legal would not allow us to meet your October 1st deadline.
Yeah.
And that's what I said. I said, I don't think we can do it, but we can try. It wasn't a definitive no, it was just that recognizing the, how legal works. And I had talked to some other people about, you know, can we get this? Will it take a month, two months? What does it take to do that? The piece that, I felt from the start that what you were offering was a contract to us. And once we got a draft proposal of the contract, putting aside the numbers, okay, for the time being, then we could clearly work through, okay, what does Plimpton need, what does Halifax need? For instance, we've talked a little about this, we wanted to make sure that there was some sort of cost containment structure. And we could come up and, in fact, at the meeting tomorrow, we're going to get into that tomorrow night that we're having with the fire study committees. I think one of the things that has happened that has made this confusing is that there's been too many people in the mix, talking back and forth. And I really felt like we were waiting on the 20th for that draft proposal. And it may have been misconception on my part, but that's where I thought we were. And Jason had been really helpful in supplying the numbers, so we were, Plimpton, we, Plimpton were coming to a conclusion, okay, we know what it would take to run our department as a standalone. Now we have the numbers for Halifax. It looks like there's something to talk about. We're, you know, we're probably close enough. And that's where I thought we were, but in a sense, it's now into, how would the contract work? Because obviously, we, you have to protect Halifax, we have to protect Plimpton. And once we get into that governance, we both got smart people around us that can start to figure out how this should work.
Well, for me, I apologize, there was definitely a breakdown in communication, and I'm not sure where some of these dates came from, but I thought that we were looking at a deadline of that date, and I apologize, because you guys have been extremely helpful. And I think that there, and I take responsibility, or this board, that we, there was definitely a breakdown in communication. Things changed for us once we brought Lance on board, and it really, things happened so much faster, and we made so much progress in between our April meeting and just having Lance for like two weeks. I mean, things just, he gets things done, as you know. So while early in June, I don't think that we thought we would be ready, we were. I mean, he just, he got us squared away so that we had our numbers pretty quickly once he came on board. So I think there definitely has been a breakdown in communication on our end, where we have not communicated well with you about these changes and confirmed what we needed, what we thought we had agreed to. So that's definitely an area for opportunity, because we certainly want to continue to work, you know, in the spirit of cooperation with both the towns, and appreciate all of your hard work, because you guys have done some terrific work, and you both spending all that time after you getting back from Florida is, I'm, thank you, that was an awful lot for you to do.
No, we care, we care, we understand, but we, we're here to sort of figure out how we can fix it.
Right.
And I think, John, you're right, there needs to be one point guard.
Yeah, one person.
When there's something that is going to change, or there's a new idea, there has to be one point guard that relays the information. Because I think, like, I can't even remember who told me you needed that for the 20th. I just know that Charlie was told that, probably by Jason or I, we don't even know.
I don't know where that came from, either.
So that's what I mean, like, it's been this, and there's been rumors, of course, you've heard rumors that we're not interested, we have rumors that you're not interested, and so we need to sort of put all of that aside and just go back to the spirit of which this had started, which is, if it works for you, your community, and it works for our community, it's a wonderful thing, and we will do whatever we can to make it as fair and safe for everybody's residents. If it is something that you are not at all interested in, or our taxpayers are all of a sudden saying, no, we don't want to pursue that, we are still neighbors, and I have said that from the beginning, we are your neighbors and we are here to help you, not just with mutual aid, but in any department to sort of go over issues that we may be needing help with. And that's why when we want, we want to help you with your budget. If you decide that you want to be a standalone department, then we will do whatever we can to support you in that. We think a shared service would provide for us retention of staff, and, you know, we already have great response times, but it's going to help the service for second calls and all those kinds of things. So there are certainly benefits, so.
So, few things to say. One, I'm just absolutely aghast at how somehow the communication got so screwed up. It's hard to imagine, but I guess it's just typical of what happens. I think I'm going to have to take a look at that film from last Monday night, because you've come away with the sense that we were upset at Halifax. I think maybe there were three people here anxious to move ahead, less, at least surely from my perspective, less upset with Halifax, just maybe upset with the process. I kind of thought that we were aiming at June 20th, and we were sort of noodling a whole bunch of ideas up to then, and I think somehow maybe that noodling of ideas turned into, oh, that's what they're doing, and that's what they're doing. And I think maybe that's some of the frustration. I thought that the, kind of the nidus of where the truth speaking would happen was when the selectmen got together, and then that got delayed and got delayed. So there's that piece, delay, delay, delay there, which I fully understand. And at the same time, Charlie's timeline, that, you know, it seemed like we were getting into a smaller, a smaller time to deal with a really complex issue. I remain thrilled at the possibility. I think we can do standalone and do a great job. I, I think there is the potential for something extraordinary here, and I hope we can just, whatever the heck's happened up to this point with communication, we can just let it go and move forward.
Move forward.
And that would be very much the goal. I don't know how it's going to end up, I don't know what's going to be right. We're the first to try this, it's complex, that's the excitement of things, of putting it together. So I hope we can just move forward and use all of our passion. We are in that situation that there is time pressure, and maybe what it looked like last Monday night, which was, looked like upsetness, I think to some extent, we're feeling like we're hearing, well, we got to make a decision here.
Right.
You know, are we going the route of a standalone? And if we are, we have the job of finding the right chief to do it. Are we going this, this other route and we'll do something very different? So there is time pressure, and I, I think maybe that was a little bit of the frustration. In any event, I really appreciate you guys coming down and getting forth all that stuff. Let's find the date that we can sit together.
Yeah, so I just want to, you know, I apologize if Charlie's email, you know, put you in a position that you felt like you needed to make a decision, and, and sure, that really was put out, because we kept talking, we talked about being aggressive at that June 20th, and Jason and I were talking, we said, we need to sort of put a line, a timeline together so that Plimpton will know, if you want to meet this date, this is what you need to do. So I apologize if you felt pressure on that, it was, that wasn't the spirit of which it was sent, but if Charlie didn't, you know, close it out by saying, don't worry about these, you know, that's our miscommunication. Where do we go from here? We, we're going to try to meet on the week of July 9th.
July 9th?
Yeah, we all, we all reach for the book.
We have it on our schedule, right?
I think we do have it on our schedule.
So Jason and I, and if you want to take it, you can, I don't want to talk, you go ahead.
So, we already have been working on a draft intermunicipal agreement, neither of us are attorneys, but we kind of know the types of things that need to be involved in that, since we already have the agreement with the Rock and others. We've looked at probably 50 or 60 other intermunicipal agreements that take place throughout the country, it's a much more common thing in the western part of the state.
Right.
And we've taken pieces of that and kind of built a working document. What we thought moving forward would be a good idea is for John, who is available, seems to have the most availability during the day, and hopefully Chief Benjamin. I spoke to Chief Benjamin last week, and he said he would be available on the 9th. Kim and I are both available on the 9th, so we're going to check to see if John was available on the 9th. But the four of us could just look over the document that we've created so far, we get to hear some, you know, get some feedback from John and Chief Benjamin about things that... about things that they would want to see differently so we can tweak it. And when we come back on the 12th to a joint board of selectmen meeting, we have a document that we can hand out as a, a real working draft that at least has had some input by both, both sides. And so we, we were hoping, I know I spoke to Lance, he was free all morning. He had a commitment at 3:00, but he said he would be more, you know, more than willing if your board asked him to, to come over at 10:00 on the 9th. And we could at least look at the document Kim and I created up to this point and just give us some feedback on it so that we can have something a little, a little better to bring back to the joint board meeting on the 12th.
So we're meeting on the 12th of July?
That's what we're hoping.
Thursday.
Because I'm, if, if it's okay with you, I originally, I'm also on our wage and personnel board. We had a meeting that 12th, but I will change it in order to accommodate the 12th.
Yeah, we met in Halifax last time, I think.
Do you want to meet here?
Sure, we could meet there if everybody's available.
Do you guys have air conditioning?
Yeah, we do.
Well, then why don't we go there?
And then, you know, I know we're going to put sort of Lance into the, you know, I know.
No, we should.
But I think.
Absolutely.
You know, so, you know.
I mean, I, I, again, he was part of our original fire study. We would not be a 24/7 community without Lance. And I think that, again, he's such a gem for the town of Plimpton for the operational. But I think that you need to tap into that other side of him that I think could help you with this whole process.
Well, we're certainly talking to him.
Yeah.
The thing I want to make sure is that there's time in. I suppose if we do the 9th, you're saying during the day.
During the day.
Right.
10 o'clock.
We could probably get a fire study meeting Tuesday night. Because I want to make sure that we bring our fire advisory group in to start looking at this and saying, okay. In fact, that would be good because they could critique some of the things and make sure we're thinking of the right things. And then we have the joint meeting on the 12th, that sounds good?
And then we'd just like to have a thing to work.
Yeah. You guys agree with the 12th?
Fire study changed their meeting nights to Thursdays.
Right, we'd have to change it for that one.
So they would have to reschedule that for Tuesday. Okay.
Um, we did send over a draft budget and as, you know, John has the, had the original breakdown of how that was broken down. Some, some of those items, and I, I'm not going to present it here because some of those items were contractual things that have yet to be negotiated. However, we have somewhat of a, a plan on how we broke that down. And the other thing was if you had any questions about the budget that I had sent over on, on Wednesday of last week, if there was any questions up to that point. We tried to make it as comprehensive as possible. On Halifax's side, we wanted to look at especially what are the hidden costs of hiring employees, our 111F insurance, our health insurance, our time assessments. All those things that go into hiring employees that are not part of the fire department budget in either town right now, and they fall under other budgets. So we included that, we included that. And so I don't know if you had any.
We, we do have some questions, and I think the best way is to make up a list for you.
Sure.
And then we can meet, and if you want to meet prior to the 9th, just to do that piece, that could be, we can do that too.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Because we did try to think of everything and, you know, I, I spoke briefly to Christine about, like, there would be an annual change in your amount every year to represent the actual cost. So that, again, we are not a for-profit agency, but we are certainly not going to supplement other towns' budgets. So, you know, we have some great ideas that we will share with you on the 12th.
Even in the meeting that we had, the last meeting that we had, we, that was some valuable feedback that you gave us. We know that you want to look more like a partnership. We changed the budget to say both sides would continue on their apparatus, they continue on their own station.
That was great.
It wouldn't create a new legal entity. So it's difficult to write something like this from one side without hearing, you know, when you're reading through one angle.
So we can feed that back because I have been getting some different inputs, you know, like the, the legal side of what happens with equipment, depending on who town employee is driving it. You know, these are things we need to think about.
Some of those questions we might have to ask our insurance companies, our attorneys. Those, we might not have the answer for those.
Right.
And the final thing was I watched the meeting last week, like Kim did, and I know Mr. Russo had said, and all of you had said, can we build our own fire department? And I think everyone knows the answer to that is yes. And the question I was waiting to hear that I never actually heard was, how would two independent fire departments measure up to the one that we could create working together? And I think if any chief looks at what, what that would be as opposed to, yeah, we can still meet, Halifax can stay themselves forever, and Plimpton could hire a chief, and they could run a fire department. There's no doubt about that. But asking someone to look at how those individual departments measure up to our combined department, when we eliminate the geographical lines, when we have, you know, there's tons of things that I think we can save money. And I, you know, we gave that draft budget out and I said at the bottom of it, well, at least I had said to John, that's before we started deducting some of the things we're going to save money on. And I know there's a, there's a pretty comprehensive list of what that would be.
And that was really helpful. I, I think what you might not appreciate, it was, we were really in a dark places, Christine said, when we went through a couple of chiefs. And it was really a concern whether we could, we, the Board of Selectmen, because we, in a sense, we had let the town down in one sense that these chiefs probably shouldn't have been chiefs. And in that sense, it was, boy, can we come back from this? When Chief Benjamino came in, all of a sudden, we realized we just had the wrong people. It wasn't that it can't be done. And that was a change in our whole mindset. And now we feel like we're more equipped to measure the two different proposals. And with the help of the technical people we have, and I'm sure your fire study committee, I think we can get to a place where we both feel good, whatever that is. And if it's, you know, we just move forward and see where we come out.
But we do need, there is some sense of urgency on our part because we need to make some decisions over there because we can't be in limbo. So I think you may have taken that as frustration with Halifax, but I think that, as Mark stated, is more of, we're feeling some pressure to make a decision that we either need to get a chief in there, or we need to, if we're going to go with shared services, that's the way we need to go. So I liked your aggressive timetable because it allows us to work through this process quickly. And I think while, you, we could spend years talking about this and dissecting this. But if the spirit of the agreement works for both towns, then, you know, then it works. And if it doesn't, then it doesn't, and we'll continue to work together as two separate departments. But to be fair to our department, I think we need to, to make a decision.
Sure, and we, we know that Chief Benjamino, you know, he is only here for a short period of time, which really puts the pressure on you as well. And just because we don't feel that we're going to meet the fiscal 2019 date doesn't mean that there's, isn't some kind of way that we can assist you if the intent is to share services. So there could be something else drawn up separate of that to help with that. So just know that we're here in whatever capacity you may need, so.
So we're on for the 9th. Are we? So you guys are on for the 9th, we're on for the 12th. You guys are focusing on the agreement.
Yes.
The governing agreement. We're going to continue, we're going to meet with the fire committees tomorrow. Look at the budgets.
Right.
Um, what you've given us and what we've come up with on our own.
And there may be a chance that Jason will be able to join us.
I'm going to try.
Okay.
I did speak with Lance a little bit, so he has, I forwarded him a copy of our budget also. And I spoke to him about the budget. I know he still had some concerns about that. He hasn't actually vetted that out. And so that might be something to talk about.
And we'll.
And I just want, and I wanted to remind everybody, the numbers that Jason and I came up with was not blessed by Charlie, Mike Board of Selectmen, the finance committee, or a fire study. These are. We feel pretty good about it. But if, I just didn't want you, if we came back and went, oh, mamma mia, we forgot this, so we, you don't need to adjust this, I wanted you to know that they were not.
Kim, you could sell ice cubes to Eskimos.
This would, if we enter an agreement for shared services, the first year is going to be an estimate, correct?
No.
And after that would be actuals?
No, it would be actual.
How are you guys going to work that with it covering, with it being an actual? Covering our town without getting money from us?
Oh, no, we would get some money.
We did, we.
The first year, we became, the way, in the draft form that we have, the first year is, there's a dollar figure attached to that. And then we said in subsequent years, the payment would be reduced by the amount of ambulance revenue that's created out of the town of Plimpton to offset, offset that. So if, because we, the, because when we collect ambulance revenue, it doesn't become available for use until the next fiscal year. So we couldn't really, the first year, we have to charge the full amount.
Okay.
You'll still be receiving your ambulance revenue that year. And then the subsequent year, we would use that revenue to offset the cost of performance. I think I put a little footnote on the bottom of that to explain how that would work.
Okay.
And obviously, like, we would set a budget on proposed budget, meaning this is what we anticipate for storm coverage, this is what we anticipate for all these different things.
And that was included in it. So that was included.
Right.
And like, so we, we thought about compensating employees correctly for retention purposes. We thought about, you know, what we're going to need for storm coverage and all those, you know, we talked a lot about training and.
Deputy chief.
So it was, you know, just in personnel, it was adding a full-time deputy chief and four full-time firefighter paramedics. And then we'd have, you know, have additional call firefighters. And I think the important thing, like, I, I know this is difficult when I hear you say, like, we have to go back to our department. This would, this will be your department too. You know, it's going to be just as much your department as Halifax, as it will be Halifax's department. Obviously, the employee portion, where we're going to do the hiring and firing of the employees if need be, but the department is still your, would still be your department.
Right, yes. And so the thought was intermunicipal agreement as opposed to a fire district, sort of like what we did with the dispatch at Duxbury. We're all trying each other out and then down the line. If we decide to do a district, then we can look into that. But if we decide to still keep just the contracted services, then that's what we do. But this is a way of starting the process and feeling it out to make sure that it works for both communities without selling everything and.
Right.
Okay, good.
Which is very smart. Did you want to say something? I think I interrupted you.
I think I said something.
I don't think so.
You were about to make a joke after I said the blessing.
No, you know what, it was, I laughed, but it was instructive. That, you know, you said, well, this hasn't been blessed by, and then the list was a long list. And I think that's utterly indicative of the challenge that we've had for the last eight weeks and that we're going to continue to have. Luckily, hopefully, we're smart enough to deal with that, the dynamics of that challenge.
Yes, and I think for us, you know, we certainly have had a fire study committee before. And so we've done these different things, so we understand the plays of which we need to bless the plan before we go forward to a town meeting.
The one other thing I'd say is, I'd just throw out there is, that after you guys meet on July 9th, I'm, I'm not sure that it would be better that it'd be a board of selectmen meeting before the meeting on the 12th so that we're all sort of having a chance to talk amongst ourselves before we sit down.
We could make a joint fire and board of selectmen on the 10th.
Either the 10th or even the 9th, which is, you know, our usual Monday.
We're meeting on the 9th.
What time are you guys meeting? You're meeting in the morning.
10 o'clock.
So we could meet Monday night?
On the 9th, why don't you just add it to the agenda and invite both fire committees or however, whatever committees?
So we could just meet at 6:00 that night? Okay, and then we'll meet with you guys. What time are we meeting with you guys on the 12th?
Can you tell us? I think it's usually 6:00, 6:00 o'clock.
All right, we do 6:00, but do you guys do 7:00?
No, we could do 6:00, we're fine. Yeah, we're fine.
And that will be in Halifax?
That will be in Halifax, but we'll need to post that.
So 10 o'clock on the 9th, I have one.
I'll pass them to the man who'll meet at the station.
Sure, sure.
And then I will talk to Charlie about, I, you know, he knows we might need to move a meeting so that it accommodates.
Perfect.
Okay, great.
If you want to confirm, I can confirm with Chief Benjamino or if you want to reach out to him.
No, why don't you talk?
I, yeah, I already talked to him on Sunday. He said he checked his calendar to make sure he had available.
Yeah, yeah.
Terrific.
Chief, will you be meeting at the station?
Yes.
At the Halifax.
Halifax Station.
Halifax Station. I just wanted to post it.
That's not a posted board of selectmen's meeting.
No, you wouldn't need to post that.
The 7:12 one?
7:12 is at the Halifax Town Hall. The 9th is just an informal.
Is a working group.
The 12, I'm on the 12.
Okay.
So July 12th would be.
Well, that is Halifax Town Hall.
At 6:00 o'clock. Perfect, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
I know we have a big agenda, but thank you so much.
Appreciate your coming out.
Have a nice 4th.
You too.
We'll see you the 9th, or the 12th.
We have Mr. Ripley who's been waiting and we have Tara. Is this something we can do quick, Tara, or do we have to?
It's not super quick. There's a, there's, well, I think it'd be, it could be five minutes.
Okay.
Mr. Ripley, can you hold off?
Yeah, thank you.
Some of it's straightforward, and then the rest I just have to explain.
I know you have to be out of here soon.
Yeah, sorry, Tara. Thank you.
This is great.
This is beautiful.
We'll see. So the first, so keep them in order again. So don't, don't put them out of order.
Don't shuffle your papers.
Don't shuffle the papers. So I have a letter, I have two different letters. One is a letter explaining the list that is attached. And it's your first list of 46 straightforward appointments. So I have the letter here, and I combined the appointment language to say that, that list that you have is attached here. So when you look at this report, the first report, it's the, it's the first set of appointments that have been recommended and already approved and/or voted by the boards and committees.
These ones, yeah.
Yes, the first 46 are.
Great.
Like completed, I have the backup paperwork. I've been able to collect some of the minutes that reflect some of that. So if you're comfortable with signing this letter, it, it just backs up all of the paperwork that I have, yes. And I, and in the minutes, we'll include this list in the minutes that you have. And I'll have, I'll have it in my office too.
So we don't need to vote this?
Oh, no, I, I would like you to vote it.
Okay, so we vote it as presented?
Yep, the list that's presented of 46.
So I would make a motion that we vote to approve the list of 46?
Six, yep.
People who have been previously vetted.
Yep.
And we sign the letter that Tara has given us to authorize it.
I just want to look on the list for just one minute, sorry.
I have another 15, maybe 20.
So this isn't the only list?
No, then I have, then I have separated ones that had changes of terms or reorganization or other reasons. So this is sort of the straightforward.
So this is utterly brilliantly organized.
I hope so.
That's amazing, cool.
It is, it's terrific.
Well done.
So.
All right, so we have a motion.
So I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So if you can, three of you sign that, I'll get that back. And I'll give a copy to Brigitte after this meeting.
So, next list.
So the next are lots, actually. There, there are, I'm calling them 15 provisional recommendations. And that's because for one reason or the other, and they're explained in the rest of your lists. The first one is for Area 58. Karen Foy is one of our members, and Mark is also one of the members. Her initial appointment slip went to 8/24/18, which isn't our normal calendar time. So instead of redoing the slip that she's already appointed on, I wondered if we could just do a new appointment for her from 8/25 to June 30th of next year so that she falls back into the, the correct calendar.
Makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense.
So I, also I have, you know, the original slip, I have all of that paperwork. Um, so I, also, I have, you know, the original slip, I have all of that paperwork, so this would just be another appointment slip with different terms.
Makes sense.
So that's that one. Next is, so the Board of Assessors have been trying to meet, and they would be the ones, because they're an elected board, to appoint Wendy annually, uh, she's the Assistant Assessor. They've had quorum issues the last two meetings, and they're not planning on meeting again, and they're gonna try on July 9th.
Okay.
So I didn't know if you could do a provisional vote, just so that there isn't a lapse of time between July 1st and the 9th, without her being, you know, officially appointed, until we get the official vote from the Board of Assessors.
Don't they have to vote at first, though?
Well, I'm asking you to do a provisional vote for them, provisional, meaning it can change.
Okay.
But just to cover the bases right now, I don't want.
Should we take these, these ones that you are, are calling out, and make these appointments now, and then do the others in a group, is that how you recommend it?
You can either sign my original paperwork for each separate one, those are just copies for you, if you want to just sign the bottoms of these, you can, or I have a letter that explains everything.
Okay.
Here, so it's up to you, having never done this before. If you want to sign the originals, you can, and I'll just keep them. I do have them here, so you can just sign the bottom.
So that spells it out.
If you want, do you want to read the letter?
Yeah, yeah. Seems clear.
Please find the attached 15 provisional recommendations for appointment or reappointment of boards, committees, or in departments in the town of Plimpton, these will act as approval by the Board of Selectmen until formal votes be taken by the individual boards, committees. So these are ones that have to be reaffirmed?
Yeah, they're all, they're all, some of them are just to correct, um, appointment dates, at the end, I have two that have different, uh, changes of terms. So the reports are really clear, um, why I don't have them in the regular group. So if, if you feel more comfortable with signing the individual reports, you can do that.
Now, this makes sense to me.
Are you okay with it?
I'm okay.
So I'll just quickly go through why, they're provisional. So the first one was for Area 58, and that was just because to correct the terms.
Right.
Board of Assessors, it was just to help with the ward. Council on Aging, um, there's a new member, Joan Burke, who has never, I don't have any information from her, but this was all from Joy Marble, and these were voted, so what you have is the active roster. Shirley Martin is the only provisional, because she hasn't confirmed that she'll accept the appointment.
Okay.
But I wanted you to see what the terms were for everybody else. So you'll notice on the report that if they're there twice, it's because it has the expiration at the end of this month, and then you can see what the reappointment would be provisionally.
Okay.
So that's, uh, so there's only really one for Shirley that is provisional. Because the Pat Dillon's title changed for the Emergency Management, so he's now Civil Defense, um, Jim Mulcahy will be only going to July 28th.
Okay, as an emergency manager.
As the, so I didn't change what that title is, because that's what he was appointed as.
Okay.
So, and then Liz, I wondered, um, if we could do an indefinite term for Liz, because she, it's sort of part of her job description.
Sure.
So that's why I, that's why that board is in there. So it's all under Emergency Management, but different titles and reasons for changes. Historical Commission, they're, they were supposed to be meeting tonight, I believe, and, um, so the chairman has recommended Jane Schultz, um, but they have to do a formal vote on it, and it will probably happen tonight.
Okay.
Historic District Commission, um, three reappointments that are provisional, Stuart Chase, Charles Nickerson, and Carol Quinley, um, they don't meet very often, and they haven't been able to establish a date to have their board meet. So I have a letter, uh, a letter forwarded, saying that he would like to appoint them, but provisionally, until they can meet, and they are trying to set up a date.
Okay.
Open Space Committee, I redid the whole thing, because the whole committee, instead of, um, just, uh, two appointments that were coming up were Alan Wheelock and Gavin Murphy, but we realized that none of the terms were staggered, so, and that's because of people resigning or filling positions, so I suggested at their meeting that they reorganize and give different dates, so that they stagger.
And these are the dates?
These are them.
Great.
Susan Osop will be, uh, new.
Okay.
And so you'll, you can see that the terms stagger, there's about three in 2020, and then two to 19, and then 18, I mean, not 18, 20 months. So that's open space. The initial, when we first started with, uh, Records Access Officers, Peter Veneto and Leanne, Peter Veneto from the school, um, is considered the secondary Records Access Officer, uh, Leanne is for the Police Department, and I am the primary Records Access Officer, but I was wondering if she could be indefinite, instead of an, her initial appointment was for an annual term, and I'm not sure why.
Leanne?
Yeah, Leanne, the administrative.
And it's tied to the job?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I wondered if it could be indefinite for her.
I don't see why not. Unless she leaves, and then.
Right, and then we'll just do another. Region Personnel, um, Alan Wheelock provided a le- letter that he would like to be reappointed, but the board hasn't met, uh, and I didn't know if you were the ones who appointed for that board anyways.
I believe we are.
We are.
So, so Alan would, he did send a letter recommending, well, that he wanted to do it. So if you approve that, then we'll go ahead with that.
So approved.
Okay, um, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals just got all reconfigured, so this is a, a new, uh, organization of their board, so Mark Gabriel, who was, um, he was an alternate two.
Right.
He's now going to be an alternate one.
Okay.
Harry Weichl, who was an alternate, is now going to be a board member.
Okay.
An official board member, um, uh, Ken was up for reappointment anyways as chairperson to 2021, so we did the staggering terms again.
Okay.
So I suggested to Ken, this is different than how it would be reflected in their minutes that they just did recently, so he, they're going to ratify, and they'll redo their vote to reflect this, so that they stagger.
Okay with it?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have a full board then?
There's one vacancy.
But, but that's a alternate.
One alternate two vacancy, but I listed it on that report for you to see.
Yep.
I'm eventually gonna have a vacancy report, I told you I'm working on how many members are in each board, and I'll be able to print a report that will help everybody try to get other people. So, they will do that. I was told to put, uh, the term to July 31st for zoning enforcement officer, so that's just one member report that you're looking at, and all the other positions. Also, this would be replacement by a new hire for Jim Mulcahy on the last page, for burial agent, again, emergency management, you know, until.
Yep.
Uh, highway surveyor, and keeper of dams, all through July 28th of 2018. And that's only because the payroll goes to Saturday.
And then we reappoint.
And then whenever you hire somebody, we'll do a new slip for them, and they will take over. So I didn't have him re-seeking appointment for Fire Executive Oversight Committee, but I'm not positive about that.
No, no, no.
And also, Jason Park Study and Development, not sure about that.
Right.
I just didn't seek appointment. I just want to verify, did the DOR Advisory Committee, is that dissolved?
It's dissolved.
Okay.
And so is the Housing Production Plan Committee.
Okay, I don't think I even have that one.
No, you don't have them.
So I just printed this, but put dissolved with a question mark.
Perfect.
Do you need that signed or anything?
Yeah, that would be great. And then, the Memorial Day Committee, um, is part of Brigitte's, Brigitte's job description. Kathy Ferguson was a volunteer, but she's also an employee here, and Roxanne Whitbeck is also an employee, so, and we, um, can't get everybody to come to get sworn in for that, although they are volunteers, and it wouldn't happen without them, but I just wondered if it actually has to be a board? Can it just be our employees who, who get volunteers?
Well, I don't think it is in her job description, I don't know if you even, do you have a job description?
No, it is.
It is in your job description?
Yeah, we put it in.
Oh, that was so smart.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering. So, and Roxanne also, I don't know if it's in her job description, but it, she's part of it because of being the Veterans Services Agent, so I just don't know, instead of having to chase people, um, another person who volunteered on the board will not come to get sworn in, but it would not happen without him, and he's a volunteer. So I just wondered if it would be easier to not have this be an actual board, if the, if the employees can just.
Do you want to board?
Collect volunteers.
Do you want to be appointed, though?
I'm fine, I'm fine with what she's presenting.
Okay, that's just a group that you organized.
We meet once, and historical, and the garden comes.
Perfect.
We talk about it once, and we communicate email.
Perfect, sounds great, good suggestion.
Okay, and then, the only other one was the Jason Park Study and Development, I, I don't know what you think about that board, too, uh, does it need to be a board? We do have, we had Gregory Fairbanks and Pamela Modricker up for reappointment, um, but one member never came to get sworn in last year, um, and Jackie Freitas is the only other one through 2019, so do you want to keep that as a board, or, I, I'm not familiar with what that board does?
You know, the problem is, since that was given as a gift, I don't know if in the gift instructions.
If you have to have a board.
Yeah.
Why don't you let us look into that, and see if we can figure out what.
Yeah, and with things that we're kind of working on with the master plan up here, there might be some attention in organization with recreation, possibly looking at that property.
So I'll just leave her with that, and you can tell me what to do with it.
Okay.
The Memorial Day Committee, do you want to just sign?
Dissolve it?
I mean, I can dissolve it formally in a letter, and have you sign it, or.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll put it in writing.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Do you want to actually?
So, we need a.
So we didn't, we haven't voted on the big package?
No, we're gonna do that now, through the letter.
Okay, right, okay.
So you, you'll, does all make sense?
It does make sense.
So you can sign that letter, okay, and then these will all be put, merged into the appointment cards, but we're not gonna have to have you sign all the appointments, if these are your actual votes and signatures.
So I'll make a motion.
And I will forward a formalized report when everything is back.
Thank you, Tara.
Okay.
Do you need something?
So are you gonna sign that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh.
15 provisional recommendations?
Well, there's more than 15, right?
Uh, well, there's 15, and then the other boards that have been reorganized.
Okay.
There's more people, but those are reorganized.
Okay, the 15.
It says it there.
Why don't you make it, you're better than I am.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the provisional recommendations made by the, the town clerk.
And reorganizations.
And reorganizations of the two boards.
Second.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tara, very much.
That's the best that this has been in years.
Oh, my gosh.
Absolutely.
It's amazing.
I brought my special pen, because I thought I was gonna have to sign like 100 appointment slips. Mark did, yeah. Thank you, Tara, very much, for all your hard work.
The data is getting better, it's getting there, we're customizing the report.
You've done a beautiful job.
Who's taking?
Sarah, but I do have a question, the one that you dissolved, which was the DUI, do you want another letter for that, since you're doing a letter for these?
Sure. Do I have, I have it?
I don't know.
We did that quite a while ago, I thought we finally did that.
Yeah, we did, that was quite a long time ago.
I just never got word of it.
Yeah.
So if I'm gonna do a letter for each one, am I just doing, dissolve?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So much for the agenda.
Thank you.
And the times, yeah, oh, my gosh.
Well, um, so we're gonna move into the, uh, interviews for Highway Superintendent, we have, uh, two candidates, Mr. Scott Ripley and Mr. Robert Prolot. Why don't you come on up and join us, Mr. Ripley, so you can.
John, can I just remind everyone that these are interviews by the Board of Selectmen, but it's not a public hearing, so, so that, um, others won't be jumping in and asking questions, this is our, our interview process.
Okay, so, why don't you start by telling us a little bit, a little bit about yourself?
Well, my name is Scott Ripley, and I work currently for the Department of EPW, I'm the Foreman for the Tree, Cemetery, Parks, and Commons Department, uh, which covers the three active cemeteries that the town has, um, all the parks that we take care of and maintain, the Common Ground Center Town, Veterans Island, Church Green, we all maintain those, as well as the tree removal, tree pruning, roadside pruning, uh, dangerous trees, we have a bucket truck, and, uh, take care of that. And I've worked there for 15 years, just about 15 years, and I've worked with all the other departments, uh, quite often, I work very closely with the highway, uh, and with the water, not as much, we have a water department, but not as much, but we all work together, three departments work together, so, and I've worked with them, like, from the beginning, digging holes, and fixing basins, and cutting down trees, and everything you need to maintain it down, snow plowing as well, get to get that.
So, you're interested in Plimpton, could you tell us a little bit about your interest, what you know about Plimpton?
Um, I grew up in Hanson.
Sure.
And I came through Plimpton all the time, I've been playing Plimpton, Halifax, had friends in Halifax and Plimpton, so I've been through here, been around here all my life, um, and I found it an opportunity to, uh, take this position, and I just like to challenge myself and try to move on, I started out as a, a skilled labor driver, worked in the foreman's position, I'd like to try to move on a little bit, to try a little more, uh, I know Plimpton's a small town, which is great, um, much smaller than Pembroke, um, but, that doesn't really matter, the same, everything's the same, people are the same, you still have roads to plow, you still have things to take care of, and grass to mow, so, doesn't matter if you have 20,000 like Pembroke, or 2,800 like Plimpton, still the job, take care of that.
Yeah. I mean, this job has a lot of attributes to it, it's got, you know, the parks, it's got the cemetery, it's got, uh, a number of things, like, do you have a question? Look in here.
I have tons of questions. So, um, to the degree that's developed, do you have a management style in dealing the people you work with or supervise?
Yes, I like people to work with me, um, I don't find the need to, I'd rather have people work for me who want to work for me, I hope they like what I do, I, I like to work with everybody, um, I, I find that if you just, I guess I'm a hands-on kind of guy, is what I'm trying to say, and I work with everybody, I work with people, I'd rather have them be happy to work with me, I hate to force people, that's not my style, but if I have to, you have to, but I much, I find it's great satisfaction knowing that they like what I do, and like that I, how I work with them, and they'll work for me.
So invariably frustrations come up, it's just the nature of being alive.
Yep.
How do you deal with those?
Uh, I mean, frustration's dealing with public, or just any kind of other employees, or just, uh, dealing with the public, I deal with the public because I, I'm in charge of the cemeteries, and of course you deal with public all the time, grieving families and things, and it's difficult, you have to deal on a case by case, um, same with the trees, uh, we, like I said, we do have a bucket truck, so we do take down, we do tree removals and roadside, especially with this past storm, dealing with all the trees in past March, um, and dealing with the, the public, and just, it's a case by case, I mean, you have to know, you have to know your job, know what you're doing, know where your boundaries are, and that, you know, know what the rules are, what the regulations are, and work with them, you know?
So one more for me, and then I'll let others go. So, in terms of this kind of work, and, um, dealing with a department, what do you think you'd need help with, or would want help with initially?
Just getting started, I imagine, knowing, I know Jim Mulcahy, I've met him before, and we would, how would it be, just to, um, just to get a, a feel for everything, I, I said, I tend to be more hands-on, and it's harder in this position, I mean, when I went to be a foreman, um, I'm still very hands-on, I do, I actually get out, I mow grass, I do things, I, mainly because we have to, we don't have a huge staff of people, um, but I guess that's probably one thing I have to work on, is learning to delegate a little more, realize that there is a little more, I have to, I, you know, there's other things that have to be done, I guess that would be it, that I just need to get a little less I guess that would be it, that I just need to get a little less more, less hands-on, I guess.
So do you know what big shoes and what a gentleman that lived in those shoes you'd be filling?
Yes, I do. I know, I've known him since I, I've been about five years as a Foreman and that's when I met him. And I've talked with him a few times over the last couple of years at various highway associations. And he's a very, very good man. It would be big shoes to fill. He's been here, what, 25 years or something like that, 20 something years? But I'm willing to give it a try to fill him.
Beautiful.
How would you learn about the town and the roads and the needs?
I would just go around. I would have to talk to people. Of course, I'd pick anybody's brain that I could, drive around the town. I do that in Pembroke. I drive, often drive around if I have to, but often after snowstorms, windstorms, whatever, just see what's around the town. I like to be involved in a lot of the meetings, budgetary stuff. I do have a budget I have to deal with much smaller, obviously, than it would be for in the superintendent's position, but I do have a budget for my departments I have to run. And I like to be involved in other departments to see how they go, how they run, just to know. I hate not having at least somewhat of an answer. I always like to at least have something that, have something to fall back on. So to have an idea of how the things run. I know that the, you know, it doesn't have much to do with the fire or the police or... But it does. You want to know where everything is and who they are, who you can depend on. Just to talk to people.
Are you able to operate all the department's apparatus?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I hold a two A and one C, which means I can do a skid steer, excavator, loader. I do not have a four G, which is the mower, you know, part of it. Up until a few years ago, the four G was never really necessary. So as long as you held a wasting license, they, our town never really cared much. So I was out on the flail mowers and the big mowers all the time. I dig most of the graves in the cemetery, which is a burial, so, yeah, very familiar.
For me personally, I would kind of like to have a master road plan. Because I don't think I really know what the different projects are that Jim's got in the pipeline. And we have people that come to us with concerns about their roads and I can't answer whether or not that's going to be addressed. I think that would be a nice thing for, for us to work together on or, you know, whoever you're working with, to kind of have an idea of what we've got, like our capital plan. You know, this road is really in rough shape. This is what I'm going to address first, or just kind of have an idea of what the plan is.
I'd have to, obviously, work with you folks and probably pick Jim's brain somewhat to find out what would be necessary. I'm very much about letting the public know what goes on. I've always run in opposition on that. A lot of people in towns like to keep things secret, keep it quiet. Let them know. Let them know why. Why is my road not paved? Well, because we only get X amount of dollars and it costs this much to pave a road.
And there's...
And that's it.
Three houses on your street.
Exactly. Or we have one road that's in Pembroke desperately need. But unfortunately, to do it, it's going to need all new drainage, all new engineering, and we're talking about a $2 million project. People come to us and say, or my classes, and say, well, when is it going to get done? And they just don't know. But it's a plan. I mean, they know that this is what we're working towards. Yeah, absolutely. You should have some kind of long-term plan, just for the fact that you never know who's going to be here for...
And maybe Jim does. And I just don't know about it.
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I talked to him briefly about some things. I've never really sat down and talked, but I'm assuming you'd still be around to help out whoever takes the position. Nobody knows everything, so...
That's true.
As far as the storm time, I mean, from November to roughly April, you're here. I know Jim never takes a vacation in the winter. It's 24 hours because we just never know what's going to hit us.
Well, I'm on call with the tree and not so much cemetery, obviously, but I'm on call with the tree. We're on call anyway. There's been a number of times I've actually covered for the Highway Foreman, personal operations. He's been out or he was on, he, whatever, a vacation. Sometimes they do a lot of the vacations. So there's coverage, they're fine. And I've done a handful of actual snow operations. We have 38 contractors, I think, that we call in, plus there's 20 drivers in the P P W. So it's 120 miles of road, so it's, you know, I wouldn't want to do it all the time, like that big of a scale. I have done it and so, and that's true. And I'm on call, I'm used to it. I have, the police have my phone number. They call me for a branch or a tree or whatever, things happen.
We have the transfer station, too. Though it's well-run, so that seems to click, but it's one of the responsibilities. And it's a fair-sized budget.
Sure is.
You mentioned dealing with the public. How about dealing with employees in terms of if there's a conflict?
Well, you would have to, see, we have a union in Pembroke. So if something would happen, I'd have to check, we check with the union to make sure the policies and procedures are there for disciplining. You don't want to have it blow up in your face. You don't want to sit there and say, try to discipline somebody and then you go to the union and find out you're wrong. Then it doesn't work, it doesn't help. So you have to spend a bite of your time, find out what you can and can't do. And then you discipline them however good and however what's necessary. If that requires termination, then it has to be.
Liz, do you have questions?
I had asked my questions during the preliminary interview. I guess just to touch on a little bit, I would just say that the position requires somebody who's able to wear several different hats, as was discussed during the preliminary interview process. So it would just be confirming that you don't think that you'd have a problem with that, like being able to switch gears from preparing a budget and presenting to finance committee versus jumping into a piece of apparatus and operating it.
I explained at our meeting that I have presented things to the selectmen and the town meeting for budgetaries and buying lawn mowers, things like that. I've gone to the town administrator asking for money for my department as well as my own classes asking for monies for things. So I have no problem with that. Being a multi-department, that I am, it does, I have to, I have to meet with families and I have to mark out lots. I have to, we've actually, I've done expansions where I've actually designed expansions and marked them out to cutting down trees. That's what I had done previously for 10 years. I was a commercial and residential laborer, so I've cut down trees and running bucket trucks was second nature. I've had, if someone calls in sick, I have to jump in the bucket. I've gone in the bucket, did you order a detail for the day? And no one can do it. You have to just tell them, put my calls on hold. And then I have to switch around and I may have to go meet the selectman or the selectman's office for a reason. I usually show up kind of dirty, but they don't mind. So, yeah, I'm very accustomed to it now, on a smaller scale. I won't exaggerate. It's not a whole town, you know, it's the departments. But it's, you know, serving a town for the department, so I'm, I'm used to it.
This is a small town, but, so you have to do, wear many hats, that's for sure.
No doubt.
I don't want to be bored.
I don't think you'd ever worry about that.
No, no, I don't think so.
Do you know Bill Hayes, our tree warden?
I met with him. He was, that was a gentleman, he was saying, yes, I did meet him. I, just the first time I met him, I, or next to him. I guess he takes care of a lot of the trees, which is...
He sure does.
That's one thing that I, one less thing I'd have to worry about. You don't have water to deal with in this town and the trees wouldn't have to be an issue. But I am willing to work with him. I do have a background in agriculture and tree work, so I can be helpful to him if need be. That is always, that's one of the things I've kind of drifted away from as the Foreman. I've gotten more into, for many years, it really, we had a lot of dead trees, a lot of dying trees, a lot of issues in town with trees. And we kind of went that way with a, I have a very small department, it's like five people, including myself. So we went into tree work. When I took over as Foreman, I kind of went back to the parks and the cemeteries. Tree work is still a very big part of it, but I kind of focused my attention more on the town, you know, the infrastructure of that, cleaning things up, making things look nice, expansions, things like that. So it's kind of a nice thing that someone else can handle the tree work for a change, especially after this last March storm.
That's for sure.
It was crazy, so, but the idea of having somebody else do that's quite nice. And he seems very, I mean, he's an arborist, so, you know...
Do you feel comfortable that you could handle all of the different components of this position?
Yes.
Because it's, it's a lot of...
Yes, absolutely.
A lot, it's a variety.
Oh, no, I mean...
And roads being the biggest.
Oh, sure. That would be, I said, I had worked with the highway, I started on the highway and went over to the tree and tree cemetery. So, and we worked very closely together. Actually, the Highway Foreman has been one of my good friends since he started about 10 years ago. We worked very well together and I've been out with him. We've actually done road inspections and did quite a few road inspections for new developments. That's something new that started. I actually inspect the trees to make sure that there's any tree issues, which never was done before because you'd take over a development and then trees start falling or dying or... And because of that, we go through, check all the things you have to with your roads, basins and swales and curbing. So I, I am very familiar with that. Yeah, it isn't what my department is, but I am very, very familiar because I work closely with them.
And how quickly would you be able to start?
I, you know, I want to give a good, probably two or three weeks' notice.
Okay.
To, just to be obviously, for...
Right.
Sure.
Or at least look at that, but, yeah.
Okay, that's all we've got.
Do you have anything else?
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate you coming in.
And for waiting around. Thank you, being so patient. Good to meet you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you again.
All right, take care.
All right, thank you.
I know.
So, Robert, come join us. You sort of heard the question. So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name's Robert Lala. I've lived in Plumpton all my life. I've worked for the Highway Department for 13 years. Born here, raised here, went to school here. Got my home. I have my two A, four G, all the offices and divisions that you guys need. I'm very familiar with the town and all the infrastructure and every aspect of what's going on in the Highway Department, cemetery and all the other corresponding things. I personally help with the transfer station. I maintain the dam now. I do pretty much all the work in town. It's basically it. And you guys can ask as many questions as you want.
How about working with the other employees? This is, you know...
I work very well with the other employees. We all can get along for the most part. One of whom I grew up with, he's one of my good friends. We work hand in hand every day and, you know, we have a conflict.
One of the things from my perspective Jim's done is added a level of professionalism. And that's really been helpful. I mean, the next step now is somewhat like you were talking about Christine, where we want to get an inventory of the roads and the conditions because, talking to Jim, he's always said, it's going to take a bond issue to straighten out the roads in this town. But we don't have a real sense of what each road is facing. And I think as Christine said, you know, the people come in and obviously they're upset if their road's not in good shape and very hard to talk to. So the budgetary piece, the working with people, being able to document what the conditions are and how we're going to move forward is really important in this. Because I think over the next four or five years, we're going to have to spend more money than maybe we have in the past.
Correct.
I don't know where it's coming from yet because everybody says, asks the same thing, but, you know, that's when we start making all the trade-offs because we're a pretty frugal committee, or town.
Town.
Not a big income.
How do you think it will be to transition to a management role?
I think it'll be okay. I pretty much take care of everything it is now and I get along very well with the employees.
All right, and if you've got some conflicts, you're...
You could start, like a progressive discipline, verbal warnings, go into written warnings and so forth and so on until documentation starts.
Okay.
If you have to, proceed to, obviously, termination.
And obviously, they all know you're applying for the position.
So you think that'll be a problem? That suddenly people that were your colleagues, you are now supervising?
No, I don't entirely see that as a problem. I mean, there may be some people that have problems with that, but I think it'll work out just fine.
So a couple of questions that we asked before. So what frustrates you and how do you deal with it?
In this town?
Yeah.
Not really a lot. It's a nice peaceful place. Everything's pretty even keeled. And obviously, we have some issues with certain things, but we're all dealt with as they come, scenario by scenario.
So anything particular in the job that you think you'd need help with along the way? Budget?
Probably some of the budget where I think Jimmy would more than likely help me and so would Colleen. So as far as that goes, I know I can learn and grow. I started here 13 years ago as a rector and I have taken over to do pretty much everything, all the maintenance of the equipment and pretty much everything minus grants and billing and stuff. That's like the last step in this job.
The financial piece?
Yes, correct. Hopefully, I get to go.
So one more for me. Why this job?
I was born here, raised here. It's something I've always wanted to do and the opportunity has arisen and I don't want to miss it. At least I got the opportunity of taking the chance.
Sure.
I feel I'd be a good asset to the town if I can't run entire life. And my interest is for the town, the people in it, so...
You'd have no problem either in the winter as far as the November table?
No, I don't take vacation time in the winter now. I'm here every snowstorm. I think I've only missed one in 13 years because I was sick. I don't, I don't miss that much.
You feel comfortable in your ability to manage all of these different entities of the, of the job?
I already take a pretty significant role in the care of everything. It would just be a transition from there to the other side.
Liz, you have any?
Again, I ask most of my questions during the preliminary. I guess I would just ask, would you be willing to pursue different professional development opportunities or things like that, like maybe some different networking opportunities or association memberships?
Yes.
Exactly. Just to, just to get acclimated and be on firm footing, especially with some of the colleagues in the other communities.
I don't know, is, has Jim gone after 30B? Is he procurement, is, does he?
I don't know if Jim is or not. I'm in the process now and there are a lot of highway superintendents, so that's something that over time, I would say if you were to get the position first, we'd want to start out with kind of the basic budgeting pieces. And then maybe once you were comfortable and felt like you were on firm footing with that, we might want to pursue the procurement part.
Okay.
At least for the construction services side of it. Not so much supplies and services, but the other designation is very popular with highway departments in particular.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
Jim has been our town historian. He's the person I go to whenever I want to...
Whenever there's anything.
Yeah. How did we get here? And that's going to be a big role to fill in a way, you know, to...
No way. I'll be the one every time that he gets called upon to be called upon. So I've been the trickle-down person effect. I think I could fill the shoes very nicely.
Okay. Your relationships with other towns? Do you, I know we've got a, what was it, a sand sweeper?
Yes, correct.
And I think you rebuilt it?
Yes, I did. It was donated to us by the Edwards and me and the other kid I worked with. The old machine power group and rebuilt it.
So is that something, I mean, as far as getting to know the other towns so that we share expertise? And also, these towns have been pretty good to us in a lot of ways.
Oh, very.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it, Rob.
Thank you. And thank you for waiting around.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. Thank you.
Nice to see you.
So we go into executive session for 15 minutes or so?
Yeah, we really have to at 7:30 because it's posted.
So, we have an executive session to follow up at 7:30, and it should take, I would guess, about 15 minutes or so.
And then we'll be... Yeah, hopefully.
And then we'll be back to resume the agenda.
To finish your... Exactly.
Yep. What do you need in Liz's office? Rob will have everybody leave here?
Want to do that? Sure, we can do that.
So, you're all welcome to stay here and we'll go down hall.
So, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of number two and upon completion of executive session to return to open session.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote?
Aye.
Yes?
Aye.
And we'll convene in Liz's office. Perfect.
It being seven minutes of eight, we're done with executive session. We're back in open meeting. And I think next on our agenda is the Atwood property.
Okay. So, I just, I think we talked last week that we had set our public hearing for, I think it's July 16th. I thought it would be appropriate just to give you a really brief update on progress. Essentially, a lot of work going on on a lot of levels, evaluating the property and evaluating the advisability of exercise or recommending to this board that we exercise our right of first refusal. And then a lot of work on if that were done, on funding. So, kind of a quick overview, a very informal working group has sort of come together from multiple concerned stakeholders and committees, members of Open Space, Concom, CPC, Board of Selectmen. So, that working committee is Linda Letty, Susan Ossoff, Deb Anderson, Marty Nova, Rick Burnett, and myself. And we've been talking and just bouncing ideas and kind of noodling different ideas. Some of the Open Space pre-acquisition funds were used for an appraisal, which you all know about have seen, and Open Space voted to go ahead and hire a hydrologic engineer, a water guy, because that's certainly an important issue with some water contamination issues down the road. We're expecting a report from that fellow, I think later this week. It'll be interesting to see what he have to say because that's an important piece in this. It's probably an important piece in valuing the land and the possible buildable lots. We did, a few of us, including the engineer site, visit a couple of weeks ago. Also, members of the Open Space did a site visit last week, and so I've been out there a couple of times. It is a pretty amazing property. I mean, it is like being out in the wilderness. Big, open space in the center of it, quite nice. We have had, the working group has met with a local attorney. We certainly would be using K&amp;P if we got to the point of actual documents and all that, but she's had a lot of experience doing with CPC stuff and dealing with these kinds of projects just to give us some direction. The intent would be multiple funding sources, CPC money, private fundraising, and that process is getting underway a little, and then possibly some lots of real estate upfront. We've dealt with access issues. If in the front lot there were a parking lot to get into the land, probably there'd be need either for a small boardwalk to get over some wetlands. And there have been some meetings with, in a butter, for possibly for an easement. That'd be another way to do that. So, really, that's where we're at. That's where the work is being done. I think the intent is getting this all together so that a presentation, both the pros and cons, can be made to the Board of Selectmen on the 16th.
How many lots do you think realistically could be pulled out of that?
Developer, I think probably has got it fit in for five. There's been discussion among the stakeholders that are looking at it from this town, ranging from a preference for zero, which of course would be great, but in the practical world of not overusing CPC funds, the general consensus, if it wasn't zero, the two to three.
And they're worth, what, 150?
Yeah, we're thinking that especially if it were two or three or rather than five, that they're more valuable that way. And we have some appraiser and real estate, realtor information that implies that. So, yeah, I think reasonable and conservative to see 150. And so, if that were 300,000 or 450,000, this gets down to a manageable number. And if we could raise $100,000 in private funds, then we really get down to a manageable number.
You're working on potential deed restrictions too if we do sell the lots?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. That goal to protect the butters, to protect the town, would be as much as possible to keep this in the flavor of town. I mean, there are a lot of people involved in this that are particularly concerned about water conservation and conservation and open space and all of that. And I, you know, obviously, avoiding having to build any lots would be wonderful, but on a practical level, I think if we're going to do the kind of protection that we want to do for Open Space and want to restore water resources, there may have to be this blend. And I mean, if we went this way, it's certainly a whole bunch better than what the developer wants to do in terms of minimizing the impact on the town.
Yeah. I just worry about, you know, as the master plan comes into effect, as we start to, we're going to need monies from CPC there too, so we don't bring it down to zero.
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of ways to noodle the numbers and I, you know, and we are noodling at this point, not making a proposal, but if 300,000 or 400,000 came out of selling lots and 100,000 came out of private donations, then we'd be down to two or 300 in CPC funds, which, so we wouldn't clean out that fund.
Yeah. Good, good. Okay. Interesting.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Exciting. A challenge. Boy, these are complicated.
Yeah, I'm sure they are.
No, you've got a good group of people.
But we'll keep working on it. And I, no decisions have been made. We want to get it as right as we can and have as much of a plan together as we can.
Great.
I think I will ask Ken. Ken, you wanted to talk briefly to us?
I'd like to talk to you, but it's brief or not, it's up to you guys.
We need a brief. We've got still a lot of stuff to cover.
We need to be careful also that whatever, I think whatever you're talking about isn't on the agenda, so.
And if it's part of an ongoing public hearing...
Well, I assume the forum went in about town council requests.
That's here in correspondence, but it's not for discussion, really.
Okay, but we'll get a sign.
Right.
Well, I'm going to provide you with the, maybe first, a monthly update or something. And you can decide from here where we go. I tried to put this together to walk you through it without a piece of paper and I failed at thinking I could do this 100%.
What we don't want to do is go through a long discussion of things that we haven't got on the agenda.
Well, this is legal counsel, monies, which is on the agenda.
No.
No. It's just, we normally do this just in correspondence, but if this is your presentation, from what I understood, they had some hours left available for counsel?
Uh, wrong. They spent them on a hearing that occurred prior to the one that was approved because it was postponed.
Okay, so you need a new authorization for hours then, it sounds like?
And it's not just one, it's three or four.
Okay.
And I came prepared to discuss the status of them. Some have been continued.
I don't know if we really can.
I don't think we can do that tonight without, we can put you on Monday?
What?
Meeting Monday?
No.
No.
Oh, whatever.
I just, I was trying to come last Monday night and explain this to you all and I was...
We filled up.
And here's the status of all the open hearings and the meters are running on all of them, and we haven't talked about half of them. And I was wanting to give you a...
Do you normally need counsel for every hearing?
Not always. A single candle would be fine, a single simple.
Okay.
How many hours?
Industrial Communications Wire Tower is not...
How many hours do you need total?
I don't know.
Well, maybe we could authorize like a little bit now so that they can move on with some stuff?
Well, which we did for the first in the series of things which then got postponed. So, the second one used the money, which John allowed me to do, and now we're back to the money to replace it for the first one, and we now have a third and a fourth.
I think the last one, you got five hours.
Why don't you authorize a few hours so that he can move forward and we won't be specific with which case. We'll just say for zoning Board of Appeals cases.
Fine.
And then you can come back at a later date if you need more.
And just, so, and the side piece on that, I would absolutely welcome a monthly update.
Oh, certainly.
That would be wonderful. I think we do have to get it on the agenda, though.
Or I think, or if he emails an update, we could just mention snippets from it that are relevant, like we do with the assessor's office, and that way we don't get into a problem speaking about things that are the subject of ongoing public hearings for zoning.
All right. So, in the immediate and event...
Well, we did five hours last time. I mean...
And that's gone on the hearing that's...
Right, but if we give you another five hours, is that...
Well, that was described as planning for the industrial communications tower.
This is just going to be for zoning Board of Appeals cases.
And that five hours, when the next one in the line was...
Right, but if we give you...
...communications was for planning. And what happens is with some of these other hearings, the planning turns into the prep for the hearing, coming to the hearing, and now travel.
Well, you might not need them to come to the hearing if they can, depending on what it's for.
Well, not all of them, but I'm sure the one.
Yeah, you don't need the big one, probably.
Well, I was going to tell you which ones and why, and why, where the monies go. We need monies for most of them. Mark was at the one on the communications tower and has a very good handle on what's going on.
So, would five hours get you through a little bit?
For which one?
At your discretion.
At your discretion.
Uh, we've got a couple of hearings coming, maybe this week.
Yeah, so if we give you five hours to use at your discretion on these cases, will that get you over to the next meeting when we can get you on the...
Yes, to the next meeting, yes.
Okay, why don't we do that then?
The only question is...
Well, our next meeting's two weeks from now.
Right.
And you have a ZBA meeting the night after, don't you, with the industrial?
They're all there, so. And we have an open issue that they're hoping to hear on by tomorrow, which was the subject you and I talked on Thursday, which was hopefully going to lead to a meeting today, which was town land response alternatives.
I don't think this is an appropriate form for that right now.
Okay. Ask tomorrow.
Because if we put it on the agenda, there may be a whole bunch of people who want to show up and...
Talk about it.
Yeah, talk about it.
Well, they all came to the hearing.
Yeah, but they still may want to come in and chat.
Well, I've been left hanging with a response for tomorrow that was talked about last week that I now don't have. I do have on the other...
Why do you need a response for us? We're giving you the hours. What more do you need beyond that?
I guess I have to have a conversation with you as soon as I can legally have. I mean...
But we can't come into your zoning Board of Appeals discussion.
Yeah, you have an ongoing case, so you can't...
I've had conversations since the hearing that led to part of my being here, but let me turn to a second one, which is more constructive. We told him to see the fire chief. You and I identified several of the other fire chiefs. I have his report, and the requirements will be communicated to industrial communications.
Thank you.
For the hearing from the fire chief, and I thank him profusely. He did a job.
So, where do we play on that?
That wasn't the item that needs approval. Approvals, plural.
What would need approvals from this Board of...
I'm confused. We're giving you the hours.
For...
For your discretion.
For two weeks.
Well, until, yeah.
During which it's...
Well, is it not enough hours?
Uh, true, it's not enough hours.
So, how many hours do you need?
What's more important is an understanding of what's going on. And if it takes 48 hours, I guess I'd like to reconvene with this. I was prepared to have a discussion of the nuances of each of those. We're not insignificant. And if you need 48 hours to post it...
We do.
I understand.
We can't, though, hold active hearings on something that's the subject of an ongoing zoning Board of Appeals public hearing. The board, this board could put them...
It's a meeting.
This board, though, could put themselves in jeopardy if they're talking. And honestly, I don't think you should be speaking about ongoing public hearings. You have to be impartial as the chair of that board.
Well, and we have no say in what you do. You're an independent board.
Right, we have no standing in the zoning matter.
Right.
Well, I'm going to back up all the way to the beginning. This is status report of all the hearings that are going on. There's information I need from time to time. Would you please tell me who and when I can talk with? And when I do talk to someone...
Probably you, as the chair.
...talk about deadlines.
Come talk to me?
Yeah, talk to John. He's the chair.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
When?
I'm here tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we voted five hours?
Yes, that was...
Okay.
And Bree has the floor.
Perfect.
Are you interested, well, I'm up here, copies of the fire chief's comments on the...
You can keep that in your file for the case.
Will do.
Okay.
We can chat about it tomorrow.
Yeah, talk tomorrow. Thank you.
If, when do you meet again? Don't we meet on...
The 9th, I think, isn't it?
But do you have another meeting scheduled with the Board of Selectmen?
On the 12th.
The 16th is the public hearing for the...
Do you have another one this week, though?
Yes, on tomorrow.
Tomorrow, the 26th?
That's the fire meeting.
That's the fire, the joint meeting.
But the Board of Selectmen is attending?
Yeah, we'll be attending.
Then if he uses his five hours in the matter of, that another one could be voted on, can I...
Well, the thing is, the chair can always authorize him to contact counsel if they need more time.
But we wouldn't be advising him on any other zoning matters.
No, no. That's just done through counsel.
Okay, so town administrator is...
Who was the vote on that? Do you need a vote on this?
We didn't vote, no.
No, we just authorized him to use five hours.
Town administrator.
So, I'm working on the two scopes of work for the old townhouse, for the restoration painting and the windows. That's turning out to be a little bit more technical than what I initially had in mind, but we'll get it put together and out to bid and move forward from there. And also, I was just looking for a general approval that it's okay for me to sign on with that structural engineer, RSE Associates, to have them take a look at the fire station. The cost will be $2,200 and...
So, make a vote. I'll make a vote. A motion that we authorize the town administrator to hire a structural engineer. What was the name in the...
RSE Associates out of Watertown, Mass. for $2,200.
Okay.
And that will be coming from...
Building and maintenance.
Buildings and maintenance.
Building maintenance.
And we approve also the door from the same?
We haven't done anything with that yet.
Because we were waiting for estimates, firm estimates.
Well, and I had Steve looking. You're talking about the door at the old townhouse? I had Steve start looking into it and then John Willamson had me tell Steve, like, no, hold off. So, I did that. So, and I haven't done anything else with it.
So, I'll second John's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. How quickly do you think they'll have a report for us?
Fairly quickly, I think. We're just going to coordinate the schedules. John has a family member who was involved in the initial construction of the building, so I think it would be useful to tap into that.
You know Alan Ferguson?
Yeah, he may have been the building inspector at that point.
No, he built it.
Oh, he built it, okay.
And Chief Benjamino wants to be present on site for it too. And I'll, probably as a courtesy, I'll let Tom Millius know when they plan to come out, just in case he wants to poke around and do that. And then for correspondence, all we have is the Plimpton Halifax Express, and they had some very nice pictures from Flag Day.
They did, yeah, they did.
They certainly did.
Okay, board's goals, I think we can skip over these unless there's...
Well, do you have anything from Public Safety?
Uh, nothing, no.
Okay.
It's getting taller over there. Slowly, slowly.
We're going vertical?
It's good.
It's exciting.
It's super exciting.
Okay, dates to remember. So, we've started summer hours, beginning...
Next week.
Next week? Feels like we're going to be...
I know.
Regardless, yes, summer hours, but not true for the Board of Selectmen.
So, we have a open meeting, Board of Selectmen, on July 9th and July 23rd, and we added...
A public hearing on the 16th for the Atwood parcel.
And we did a fire one.
And there's a fire one tomorrow, and there will be a fire one on July 12th.
Yes, we have the fire one posted for tomorrow night.
Yes.
And then the 12th will be a joint meeting of the Selectmen.
In Halifax.
In Halifax at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay, so someone will have to be on top of posting that.
Okay.
I'm going to post the 7:12 joint with Halifax.
Uh, 7:12 joint with Halifax, okay.
All right. And you want to do 6 o'clock?
Right.
Yep, in Halifax.
At their townhouse.
Yep.
Probably the Selectmen's meeting room.
The large meeting.
Yes.
Of July. And tomorrow, we start at 7, right, John? Is that the time?
Yeah, 7 o'clock for the fire meeting. So, we're closed July 4th, Independence Day. We have a Plimpton Gas and Convenience License Liquor Transfer. That's on July 9th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
7 o'clock.
Oh, so those hearings are on here, okay.
Who's doing that, but where? In a fire committee, right?
We could do the...
Oh, I see, that's Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry.
That's the night.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so they could come. They're coming at what, Bree, 7?
7 o'clock.
Okay.
So, that'll give us a full hour at least to...
Excuse me, I do have a question. The 7:09 in the morning one, I don't have to do...
No, no posting.
See what you come in.
That's right.
Okay.
And Bree, on this one, on 7:09, you've got all the ABCC documents for this, the transfer of license?
A little bit.
Okay.
I can't send anything in until I get the date that we did the hearing.
Okay.
And by the time they sent it in, and with the, it has to, had to run in the paper for two weeks.
And you've already had it in the paper? Okay, perfect. Yeah, I think it goes in that paper.
And...
Okay.
So, we got minutes. So, first one is 6:11.
I think that's the only one, isn't it?
6:13.
Oh, I see, yeah. Oh, yeah, from you.
We got 6:18. Did, I don't know, well, let's start with 6:11. Anybody have any corrections? I...
I had, under appointments, the Silver Lake Regional School Committee makes a recommendation to us about who to appoint, so I would just tweak that somehow, as Jason Fraser met with the board and recommended the appointment of Michael Antone.
Antoine, I think it is.
Antoine?
Yeah.
And that, and then we made that appointment.
Okay, because he voted that.
He did, but they, they have to make, they have to recommend somebody to us.
Is that why?
Yes.
So that's why I had it.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Sure.
Do you have any issue, Mike?
I don't know.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't have anything. I read it.
Michael. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 6:11 as amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's 6:11. 6:13, we got?
Right.
I guess I don't have it, but I read it and I...
I read it, too. I thought it looked great, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion, maybe 6:13 minutes be approved as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6:18? Did you get a chance to see those?
I never saw 6:18.
6:18 would have been...
They just came in, so...
We're waiting for those, I think.
Well, we've got the draft, but we can wait till next meeting.
Okay.
Unless you want to...
Do those?
Oh, that's from, that's from me.
6:18.
Oh, yeah, those are the ones that you did.
Oh, yeah, I saw those.
Yeah, those looked fine.
Yeah, I thought those looked good, too. Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of 6:18 as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thanks for the chance to do the minutes last week.
Oh, and then you did the 20th, too, didn't you?
On second was John?
Second was John, yes.
And then the minutes of June 20th.
And that was our, Mark and I attended the meeting, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of June 20th as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't there.
Perfect. All right, so we're current again.
CJ is presented.
Mark, second.
Mark, so...
And it was two to nothing, I abstained. Okay. Selectmen's rants and raves.
All right, I want to, I'm going to pass my spot.
Mark, you want to?
I'm kind of used up. Vaguely, I'm just amazed how communication, even from well-intentioned from all sides, can somehow go wrong, and just disappointed how that happens, but it happens everywhere all the time.
Yeah.
It's part of the job. I...
I'll take some of the responsibility for that. We've had a lot of balls in the air with the fire issue, and a lot of it is the technical committee meeting. You know, we, we've not had a full Selectmen Halifax meeting since the presentation, yeah.
Yeah, which, which I think is the question of the matter.
And that's part of it, yeah. We're getting notes from Charlie, we're getting, and there in turn, you know, getting conversations. Some is mine, some is Barbara.
Some is mine?
True.
Yeah, I think, right.
So we'll work our way out of this.
Right.
I'm going to have a rave of volunteers I see going around here. Every time I see the list that Tara brings in, I'm amazed. I don't know another town that has this kind of voluntarism going on, and thank God.
Thank God it's right. We really, we should try to do some type of volunteer recognition.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's, it's something, you know?
Maybe a car piece.
Even if we just have a, you know, a coffee or something, or...
That'd be nice. Have a Volunteers' Day.
Coffee and donuts some Saturday morning. Yeah, have a Volunteers' Day, just...
That'd be nice.
To do something little to show them that we appreciate them, because they are, they keep us, keep us moving.
Okay, unless there's anything else, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.